Okay. Good evening, everyone. October 7, 2024. Select more meeting and please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing is on the agenda, citizens input part, and I believe we have still Frank Govein tonight. How you doing Frank?
Well, yourself?
Good, good.
I've got five minutes, so I put everything down so I could act.
Thank you. We try to keep the consistency, you know.
First off, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And as a quick matter of background, I've been a resident here for 26 years. I live over at Fort Beaver Pond Road in Bellingham, Mass. Here to discuss and hopefully change the current process and policy with field usage here in town, specifically around the High Street Field Complex, which is most of the areas through softball fields and a concession stand. Providing a quick overview, myself and a few others have approached Next9Up, the facility over in Franklin, about establishing a club softball team. We went to them particularly because they've had a lot of success with the baseball program, namely Hot Valley Panthers and the Franklin Bulldogs. So we thought that there would be a great opportunity, since they hadn't had a softball program, to start one. And after some conversations, they were thrilled about trying to create a local softball program, you know, to satisfy the surrounding towns. You know, after that initial discussion, we realized, well, one, we needed to actually form some teams, and then second, looking for field usage. I then had a conversation once we put together a team, a 12U program, with the BGSA, which I had formerly been a board member of, and I had said, you know, what do we need to do here? We want to work in concert with you. They were thrilled to have us use the fields. We knew that we would, that the BGSA program, as well as the high school, would take priority. We were going to use, you know, whatever time would be allotted, and they were fine with that. We even had suggested that we would like to host a tournament there that wouldn't conflict with any of their tournaments that they host over the summer. The only ask that we had was that they open the concession stand and they could keep 100% of the proceeds. And I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but that can generate well over $1,000 in a weekend. You know, that could be used for scholarships, general maintenance, et cetera. So yet another revenue opportunity. At that point in time, the BGSA president said, you need to speak with Mr. Roberts in order to secure a field permit. I had reached out to Mr. Roberts, and he had said, send me an email with a brief intro about yourself and what you're looking to accomplish. So I had sent that off to him. He had also mentioned during that call, at some point, we're going to need a copy of your insurance binder. A couple of weeks later, I had sent that over to him. And, you know, at that point, I hadn't heard back, so I had reached out to a few other folks, and they had said, I think that there may be some concern with the conflicts with the BGSA and the high school. So I had sent another re-mail to him with the members of the board of the BGSA, ensuring him that the high school and the BGSA would take first priority, and the only thing we're looking for is during their off times. I had then received kind of early to mid-September a notification that the process had ended, that we weren't going to be able to receive a permit because we were technically a for-profit organization, and it's the town's policy to not use facilities for for-profit organizations. And I think, taking a step back here, I think that this is a bit of a misnomer, because I don't know if anyone is familiar with Next9Up, but it's one of the only facilities in the area that can do indoor softball and baseball. And they've been a great partner with both the Bellingham basketball, I'm sorry, Bellingham baseball and Bellingham softball. They run winter clinics there. They are the financial sponsors for everything that you can imagine. Signs on the field, discounted rates for use of the facility, et cetera. So I think the term for-profit, you know, it's not some nebulous corporation somewhere else. They're neighbors of ours, and they are quite more of a partner than they are anything else. So I want to make sure that the term partners is really stressed here. The other thing is, there are also some local ties established with Next9Up. Coach TJ Chapo is affiliated with there, Coach Doug Houston's affiliated there, the varsity softball coach, Coach Courtney Cox, Courtney, Courtney Cox, Courtney Parker works over there, and Andy Nolan is also affiliated with there. So again, it's not like this is far-reaching outside of the town of Bellingham. So again, I want that to be, you know, kept in top of mind. The other thing is to kind of put things in a couple of perspectives. I also think it's inaccurate when I was told that the town does not allow the usage of facilities, because I don't know if any of you have been to a Bellingham basketball game, and there's 5,000 cars in the parking lot, because there's a dance competition going on in the auditorium. And I can tell you that by no means are any of those dance schools not-for-profit. I also know that jamborees are run over on the turf field for both soccer and lacrosse. Those are all club programs. So I think that the policy and the process needs to be taken into consideration here. Why is the High Street Complex so much different than other usage facilities within the town of Bellingham? Especially if we're going to also be a revenue generator for the BGSA, to use funds from like a tournament to be put right back into the program. So again, I think those are some things that need to be kept into consideration. I also know that when I was part of the Bellingham Board, if I wanted to use the high school facility, there were two sections of the permit. One was for if I was an in-town program, there was two sets of pricing, we had to take care of the janitors. If I was another organization, it was another set of pricing, but I still had to take care of the janitors. So once again, I think that there's a differential here of why is High Street Complex different than other facilities usage, you know, here in town? And, you know, the other thing that I wanted to make a point of is, I know that there's an 80% threshold for if you're a for-profit of residence. And, you know, one of the things is, if you look at the makeup of the team, there are three girls from Bellingham, there are two from Blackstone, but they actually have to play for the Bellingham team, because Blackstone doesn't offer a program. So they may not be tax-paying residents, but they're fully ingrained in the BGSA. The other players, one's from Hopedale, the other one is from, the other couple are from Nettmuck. Every one of them participates in our spring, our summer, and our fall BGSA programs and tournaments. So once again, I think that there's a bit of a misnomer, you know, we're not pulling kids from New Hampshire and having this mega organization that's, you know, oozing money, and, you know, we're going to try to block everything else. That's not the intent here. And again, I think that we need to keep in mind, these are 11 and 12-year-old girls. The High Street Field Complexes need to be mowed and maintained, no matter what. It's public property. 11 and 12-year-old girls aren't going to create layer and tear on dirt and grass to the point where we need to replace the facility every couple of years. So again, I think that that needs to be kept into perspective. You know, kind of lastly, I've been a resident for the town for 26 years. I've been involved, you know, pretty heavily in the community, whether it was my time on the school committee, which, you know, some of you remember. I've been coaching baseball, basketball, and now softball, and I was on the BGSA board for two terms. I want nothing more than to be a friend and respect everything that goes along with the fields and the residents here in town. I would never do anything to jeopardize that, and I know that the folks over at Next9Up would never want that to happen. So my only ask is, we take a look at what the policy is here, and we readdress it, and look to, how can we get 11 and 12-year-old girls out in the softball field as much as they want, rather than burying their face in a TikTok on their phone? So that's kind of where I'm at. And I would hope that all of you would agree with that.
Thank you very much. Since you, I'll speak first.
I was going to say, anybody else?
Yeah, no. And one is, thank you very much. I would like nothing more than to see those fields used. This Bellingham BGSA, that program has dwindled significantly over the years. My, both my daughters played softball for a number of years. And I live on Maple Street. I use High Street all the time. It really saddens me to see those parking lots empty. The three fields are empty. There's one, the field number one on the right-hand side, I think it's Lorry. It looks beautiful. It's green. I know it's brightly, I know we're maintaining it. And it really saddens me that I don't even see a playground there. Kids used to go there, I'm swimming in the swings, nothing's used. So I am absolutely in favor of having a program utilize that field, whatever insurance, but I also want to understand is, it's a town. The difference between what you described at the high school, that's managed by the school committee, correct? The softball field is, the softball program, high school uses that field because it's the best alternative, but that actually is a town park. That's the difference between, if you're wondering why, it's a town park as opposed to the dance contests are in the high school, and not the gymnasium, but the auditorium. It's different. It is separate. But I am very much in favor of a program utilizing it, because it saddens me to see those fields empty. Years ago, I wanted to put a dog park toward the back. We were going to do it, then a new board came in and flipped, and they, no, 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 don't take our fields away. And every day I drive by there, I never see those fields used, except for four or five times a year, when there's tournaments. So, and I would love to see the Bellingham Girl Softball Association utilize that concession stand and raise money for their own program. I think it would be fantastic for them to use that, if that's what you're saying. But I also feel that the Next9 program should pay a fee to the town of Bellingham for the usage, the maintenance, et cetera. And I have no idea what that fee would be, but I do believe that we just shouldn't say, hey, it's yours. Absolutely. I think there should be a fee, and I'm sure there are fees paid to Frank. I mean, I know nothing about your program. I have boys that have played baseball for years, went through club, and did all that stuff. I know what it costs me personally. And I know they pay for umpires and field use, but I have no idea what those, what we could, as a town, could pull that money back in, and we could use that for additional maintenance, whatever. So that's my two cents. I think it's a great idea. I don't know of any negative, but that's why we're here. So just.
If I could just, yeah, one of the things I had mentioned to the BGSA specifically about the tournament was, we would cover all of the costs of the materials, like they wouldn't pay for the chalk or anything like that. All of the parents would volunteer. So there would be zero cost to or time, other than the concession stand. And, you know, again, when I was on the board, we give two scholarships to girls that, you know, went through the BGSA up to the high school, and then to where they were going to college. If they bring in an extra $1,000, you know, whether it's fixing a fence, you know, that's around there, or, you know, increasing the level of scholarship, you know, these are the things that I think are worthwhile. And quite honestly, it was never broached about what the, we would be willing to enter discussion about.
Yeah, I think it should be, because there's maintenance, et cetera, and, you know, there'll be more maintenance, because one is, if you're going to use the fields for practice as well as games, it's going to get more use. So I think there would be more maintenance required. We do it anyway, but I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit. I would think that there would, should be some fee paid to the town. I don't know where that money would go, but I would imagine it would somehow go into the Parks Department, because even though people still think we don't, we don't have one, we technically do have a Parks Department in the town of Bellingham.
Yes.
That's my two cents.
My, it's good, Mr. Leveson.
Well, I didn't know that much about the program period, because I had no one who played it, sorry, I had no one who played it. So I was unsure of how it all worked, but I, as you explained it, and then as I listened to John, I, once again, I think he's right. If we can come to some sort of term as to a fee, and you're going to use it on the off times of our own kids, I don't really see a problem with it, but I think that we also have to involve Mr. Roberts, who does a lot of work getting everybody scheduled in all this, in the entire town of Bellingham. That man schedules everybody, and it's kind of a, a great job, I think. I don't know how he does it. But I think that we should be able to work together on this, you know. It's anything for the kids, and to keep them busy and occupied is good. So, you know, if we can get that together, I don't have an issue with it. I really don't. I think it's great.
So, one thing?
I think it's time to reevaluate the procedure or the policy that we had that got us here, and see about what the new opportunities look like, such as you mentioned earlier. I do think it's very similar to how we rent out the auditorium, or other groups that can utilize our properties the best way possible. So I do think it's time for us to have people look at that procedure and policy, and see how we can amend it to be more current, more viable for these programs that you, so you mentioned. I did reach out to Dan about getting those fees and seeing about what they look like in surrounding towns, very much similar to what we rented the auditorium for. And so I think it's doable. It's just a matter of having that conversation and making sure everyone's representative, I think, of the both parties. So I'm in favor of what you brought to the table, so.
Thank you.
Like everyone said, you know, it's anything for the kids, absolutely. I am in favor of it. And I think when it comes down to, you know, like everyone said, it's, it might be some costs involved, scheduling, and if those things are lines up, and I don't see no problem too. I think it's a, maybe, you know, we'll take that into consideration, and then, you know, it's obviously seems like if we all agree, as long as if we can make it work with the scheduling, and then the cost, whatever that might be. And I don't see, I don't see no issue. Seems like a less direction you want to go, unless Dennis, like that, something on it, and it's.
No, I think it's always been our policy on the fields not to allow for-profit, but, you know, maybe it's time to reevaluate and look at fees. I mean, girls pay thousands of dollars to be in these programs. I know the deposit, just for a tryout, is $500. Maybe we have Bellingham residents play for free, and, you know, it's not just the maintenance of the field. You got to take into account the value of those fields and what the town's put, just like the auditorium at the, at the high school. It's not just a matter of saying, oh, a couple of custodians to clean it up. The taxpayers of Bellingham paid for those and built those. So there's values associated with that. So that's my only point. I think, I think we have stayed away from rental on our properties. If it's something the board wants to consider, we can certainly take a look at it.
So, I don't even, I know, I guess, I think we're at a stage where we have to do a little bit of evaluation on our end first, before we can have any type of decision made. But I think it's opened our eyes, and we're not saying no, but we need to look at, you know, maybe look at what other towns do if they do this, and come up with some ideas, and so, you know, what are the costs? I have no idea what the school department charges for the use of the auditorium, you know, all that. I have no idea. So, we have to look at that.
If it's that the case, then Mr. Govein, you know, can we do maybe a little bit more due diligence on our part? We'll take your honesty and a proposal to consideration. I think it's a great idea. And then, you know, maybe we'll check with the school department, as well as Mr. Roberts, and then Dennis will do some research, and then, and we'll get back to you.
Is there a way that you can, is there a schedule that Next9Up has already that can, like examples of history that you've already seen in action that we can utilize as a template?
So this is legitimately the first year of the softball program. So they can, I don't know if, Dave was going to try to get here. It'll probably mimic a lot of what the baseball programs do, quite frankly, you know, in terms of field usage. And, I mean, my only concern was something like for like, because, you know, like Franklin, they have so many teams, because of the size of the town, that field usage is overwhelmed. Let me speak with Dave, and I can probably get you some information.
That history, that data might help us to figure out what that might be like going forward, and then we can decide on our side what's necessary.
Also, number of teams.
Yeah, as long as, you know, the work's on the both sides of the parties, and I don't see no harm. I think that's what we'll agree upon. As I said, you know, it's obviously, it's going to be the maintenance, the fee, maybe some kind of compromise for the Bellingham kids. You said, probably, what is it, 50, 60% over for the seminar?
So there's three of them, I want an 11-person roster, so, you know, slightly under 30% at this point in time. The other two girls that play in the BGSA, but they live in Blackstone, so they're not tax-paying residents, if you will. So, ones from Hopedale, and then the rest are from Nettmuck.
And if there are days, you know, that we are not using the fields, like Mr. Martinez said, you know, instead of the field staying empty, and if we can use it somehow, and at the end, it's all about the kids, as long as works with both sides of it, and I think it should be, it would be a bad idea. If we can gather that information while we do our due diligence, and then we'll somehow reconnect, and then, you know.
We can put it on whenever we're ready to put on the.
Excuse me, sir. In reference to the number of children or young ladies that you have positioned on each team.
Yes.
Mentioned Blackstone. The Blackstone organization was absorbed into Bellingham because of no team availability down there. I'm aware of that. At that point in time, they become, if they're playing for the town's inside system or in-town system, and asked to play there. They were advised back when they came, crossed over the town line, that they would have 80% of the players, since they were only bringing a small staff over, 80% would be, for a 12-man team, would be about eight players on the field, or eight players on the bench, being quoted as Bellingham, which would allow them to fulfill their other three players on each team. That's how it was broken down back then. So at that point in time, if they're being absorbed into the program of Bellingham, that program is more or less authorizing those children to transfer over. That gives you a possible option, but to add and bring in outside towns, that poses a problem of making it, quote unquote, possibly somebody that didn't make the team. How were they, or whatever? I understand it's a club organization, but you still have to say, is this going to be a Bellingham team or a chosen Bellingham team? That's all I'm stating. Make sure your numbering of your children could utilize the Blackstone organization, combining with the Bellingham organization, like it has been for years. And that's how that's been accepted. Okay, take a look at that, and your numbers just change.
Yes, it'd be five out of the 11 then, at that point in time, would be.
At that point in time, once again, we handle on the Parks Department strictly nonprofit, because it's the town of Bellingham that we're serving. All right, all our organizations in the baseball fields and a public concern are dealing with a nonprofit group as taxes, all right, as the tax indicator. At that point in time, you look at and say, okay, fine, you're nonprofit. We have other things in town, besides just the softball field, baseball field, things of that order. We have other property located in town, which is owned by this town of Bellingham, by doing what you're asking to do, and opening up, allowing the town to go profit-making. They have to look at the ability of a campsite. We have property which is under the Conservation Commission, which you are part of. That location you're talking about is part conservation. Are we going to have them camping there? All right, this is things looking down the line, how these things can be extended. And we're not going to look that far. If you only say, let's ball it up for softball only. The town has to look further down the line. We have other town property that's sitting vacant presently for taxes and conservation items that unfortunately, if we open it up to allow organizations of outside concern use them, we lose our tax base to say, okay, you're bringing them in, but we can't charge them any tax for using that information, or using that partial land, whether it be for camping, or another softball, baseball, like we have in Mendon. There's a soccer field over there. That private organization can come to town and say, we'd like to take over your private land, your public land, put a couple of baseball dino's there. And that's what you're also looking at. So this is what the board really has to sit down and consider. Just my, great idea. I love it for the idea of the kids, stuff like that. But this is the town of Bellingham, and we have to keep it for usage for the town of Bellingham. We are not working for owning land here and giving it to another organization outside of town, so I can pay his electric bill, so he can take cash out of the child's mother's and father's pockets to pay his electric bill.
I think we're getting way off track. I mean, we're not looking to camp there. We're not looking to take money out of people's pockets and.
Mr. Roberts, if you don't mind, it's, I got to move to, I got to move to agenda here. So if you can gather the information, and then we'll do our due diligence, and then we'll connect on the, either next meeting or meeting after.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, I know we got a little carried on the schedule, and let's move along. And the next thing is on our agenda, historical commission interviews. And I believe the first one is Douglas Snook.
Yes.
How are you? How you doing? Thanks for your time.
Oh, thanks. I know it's been, but over a couple of times. All right, so let me just tell you a little bit about myself. I know you have the application. But you said, my name is Douglas Snook, originally from Everett on the North Shore, or just north of Boston. Not too many people know where Everett is, but then again, not too many people know where Bellingham is. The funny thing about being from Everett is, next door is Chelsea, and there is the governor's hunting lodge, the Bellingham Cary Mansion, when Chelsea was the woods. And they have a historic house there, which I've been to. So I've only been in town a little bit over 15 years. Meet somebody from Franklin, and next thing you know, you're living in Bellingham. So that's how I came down to be here. But I've always been interested in history. I was a history major in college and became a lawyer. So you had to study all the history to go to the law school as a good background, especially like English history, where the law comes from. But even without that, as I said, I've always been interested in history. We did family genealogy. I have six brothers and a sister. We did genealogy, and my older brothers were into railroads, and so I got chased all over the North Shore when I was young. They were chasing the old railroad lines for the Boston and Maine, because my grandfather had been a conductor for the Boston and Maine. So there's a million pictures of me standing in front of some pile of something that used to be something for the railroad, which, of course, we have it down here, which is now the Snet Trail. So, yeah, my brothers came down here, they saw that, and I was chasing that railroad line out through Douglas, and hey, I was like, I'm not into the railroads. But I also like to collect things. My wife will call it hoarding. I say it's collecting. But, so that's always had this interest in history, and I've been interested in the history here in Bellingham. One of the first things my brother bought me when I told him I was moving to Bellingham was the book for the bicentennial from 1919. So I have that. I've also collected all the postcards. I have a ton of them here that I did bring, just like I did for Everett. There's a lot more postcards for Everett than Bellingham. Let me tell you that. And that wasn't done the old way, through flea markets and yard sales, and before eBay was even a thought in anybody's mind. But when I did first come here to Bellingham, and I saw there was a museum, I did go to visit. I think I met Mr. Tapp one time, and then when one of my brothers came and I wanted to go back, he had unfortunately fallen. I forget if he had fallen down the stairs at his home or something, but the museum was closed, and it was closed for a long time. My oldest daughter, Emily, when she was in grade school, they had the thing about the history of Bellingham, and one of the things was to visit the museum. And at that point, somebody else had kind of taken over, and we went to the museum, and I spoke to the person who was there. I, I don't mean to speak ill of anybody. I believe it was Marsha Crook. I'm not sure, and I asked her about the commission. At that time, the, I'm going to call it the Fairbanks House at the top by Pearl Street was for sale. And I spent a lot of time talking with her, or tried to, about, did the town have any interest in purchasing, trying to purchase the house, or film it, or videotape it, or take photographs of it? Because I had seen some pictures of the inside, and I was told basically to mind my own business. The town had no interest in that, and don't concern yourself, you're not from here. And basically told me to get out of the museum at that point. I asked about joining the commission or anything. At that time, she said there was no openings, and it's only for locals. And so that was the end of that. So I had a terrible experience, and I have to say, I'm glad to see over the past few years that the museum has opened more, and, you know, things like that. And, like I said, not to speak ill of her, but, you know, that was one of the things. So when I heard there was an opening, I was like, great, let me get involved in the town that way. You know, so and I do have some ideas about, not that I want to run it, I'm looking to take it over, or be the chairman, or anything like that. But, you know, some ideas to discuss, and it's just an example, like, say, with the Fairbanks House. When I saw that they had a fire in there, and I knew it was done for, I knew they would be tearing it down. And I had gone by one day, I think it was after the fire, and the front door was removed. The front door was removed and a lot of the windows had been removed and boarded up. And I don't know if you recall, the front door. Um, had a very early federal period pediment. And you know, I thought, I tried to contact somebody at the museum. I said, they should cut that off. I mean, if the house is going to be torn down, that could have been saved. I know that might not have a place to put it, but it could have been saved till the. Perhaps there's a bigger building or something have re-erected somewhere else just to show it isn't fine example of. An eighteen hundred pediment over a house, but all of that's gone. But again, that was just. Some, an example, or did anybody go and photograph it again before it was demolished? Um, I, when I saw the pictures of the house for sale. There was a huge, I think it was four-sided fireplace in the middle of the house, center chimney. The kitchen had a beehive oven built into it, huge, huge open hearth. All of that should have been photographed and. I mean, it's all gone now. And so I see that happening in Bellingham more and more the history is going. Um, again, just as an example over where the Curtis Apartments were put in. Those houses were very early. They should have all been photographed before they were torn down. Again, I'm not looking to run the thing or, uh, uh, no knock on the people who are running it now, um, but you know, again, just some ideas. That is my, um, history background and, um. You know, as I said, I was glad to see somebody, uh, from the Bluebird Diner donated some of the signage to the town. You know, the History Commission of Society should be out working with the people. As things are changing to either record it or ask for things like that. Um, and also, and, and again, I'm just throwing out some ideas. Um, for myself, like I said, liking history, I don't know if. I'm sure everybody's heard of the WPA, the Works Progress Administration. So back in the nineteen thirties to get people working, one of the things the WPA did is they did. A guidebook and I think they got almost every state, which at that time there was only forty-eight. And there is one for Massachusetts. And, uh, of course, they take out old roads. Going out through from Boston, from Worcester, from Springfield. So the road comes right down. One A, I think at the time it was one. So if you come down there, they say what's in every single town as you go down. I believe they talk about what's in Bellingham. Um, as a side note, but they go down through Rentham. Weber Duck Pond, when I first started to come down this way and I would go to Franklin, I came by Weber Duck Pond. Of course, at that time, there was a big sign that said Weber Duck Pond Estates. And I was like, gee, where did they get that name? Well, that was because it was the restaurant there and they were known for their ducks and you'd go and order a duck and they. Go get one out of the pond, I guess. Um, I forget what they said about Bellingham. But anyways, it's just to give you a background of my love and interest in history. Um, as I said, my wife says I hoard, I collect. Um, and I'm more than happy or willing to share that with the town with. You know, if they were to have a special exhibit, say at the. Um, or a rotating exhibit, I know they have some costumes or not costumes, I'm sorry, but. Like World War Two uniforms and things like that on display, some other household items. I mean, I have a lot of that stuff that I'd be willing, again, on a rotating basis if they were having something special. Um, but anyways, that's kind of my background, my interest in history. Uh, just a few ideas and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you very much for your time. Anybody have any questions?
You were very detailed.
Love the enthusiasm, no question. And it's nice to have. Uh, citizens volunteer, um, to help preserve our history or whatever it is in town. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Like I said, that's, that was my whole background and I know the library does the genealogy. They have some of the room over there. I mean. That's great.
And I'm very familiar with Everett, by the way. My, my son lost from Everett, so. There's a few of us that know Everett, I'm sure.
Yeah, when I say not sure, lots of people are like, oh, topsy, oh, not that, not. So I usually just say Boston and I'm done with everything and that's it. They know where the Bo, where Boston is and that's enough, so.
Thank you for your interest. It was, uh, interesting to hear your background. I'd love to see your postcards.
We have several of them posted up, I see, but there's always those few odd ones. Um, and again, I would, you know, work with the museum either way, like. Cause I hate to be outbid on eBay, but I always hope that somebody in town is outbid in me and it's gonna be in the museum. So I don't know if that's fact or not, but that's what I like to think when I lose out on eBay and stuff like that, but.
That's awesome. I, uh, we really appreciate it for your time and then, um, and thanks for actually, um, volunteering. And, uh, what we usually do actually we'll discuss and then, um, we'll, um, probably invite your.
To an appointment at the next meeting?
Yes, perfect. It doesn't care with you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks a lot for your time. And, um, if I'm not mistaken, the next person is, uh, Lauren Hubble. How are you? How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Thanks for, uh, waiting and, uh, staying around.
Well, I was invited to be here because I applied, uh, to be a member of the commission.
Pleasure to have you.
Nice to be here.
Anything, um, you would like to add? Obviously, we got the application phone of us.
Well, it's been a while, so I'd be happy to reiterate who I am. And that was a wonderful template, by the way, for background information, so. Um, I've lived in Bellingham for about thirty years. I'm originally from Long Island, New York. Most people know where Long Island is, although they presume it's something that it isn't, but, um. My involvement with the Historic Commission really began, uh, right smack in the middle of COVID when I did some volunteer work. At the museum and became acquainted with the collection and the process and. I can truly appreciate what this gentleman said about the collection and the. Spirit and the attitude of some of the predecessors on the commission. And I can tell you after having done some, um. I want to call it de-crapification of the museum, that one of my favorite things I found in the, in the basement. Was a sign that Ernie had written and it said, working downstairs, yell. Because he'd be downstairs in the museum, upstairs someone would come in. And I also found, um, some artifacts from other commissioners. Anyway, um. I think what's really important currently. Is, and I have background in genealogy and research and I can be very geeky and look up like where did these postcards come from and. Found out that, for example, a lot of the postcards that have white writing on the bottom. Came from a gentleman named Nathan Wales, who was a photographer and his, his, um. Negatives were found and there was a sale over in Franklin and somebody bought them and now they're at Historic New England. You can actually find a lot of those postcards available that you can print them out now because they trace down where they came from. And I do appreciate this gentleman talking about, um, the importance of not losing track of things. But also finding out where things came from in the first place. And so whether it's a building or whether it's an artifact. And it's been, uh, sort of a joy and a, um, mystery to me why some items ended up at the museum. And why some items have not been put in the museum. And I think that's so important. Um, I do know about the history of the town and read the books and all of that and the original families. But what my experience has been recently is thinking about the Historic Commission and the collection. And the mission of the commission. What is our purpose? So my brother and I started doing genealogy. We said, well, why are we doing this? And eventually we wanted to everybody we were related to. We have some. Non-biological relatives and who are they and how do they fit in. But eventually we came up with a goal which was, we want to find living relatives. And being the research nerd that I am, we found them and we met them and we loved them. Okay. So what is our purpose? And our purpose, I think, is. How do we connect the history of Bellingham and the original families and the Thayers and the Rhodeses and. The Fairbanks with the people who live here now? What's going to make the people who live here now? Besides the descendants of those folks, want to come to the museum, want to be involved. And I have, um, relatives who are, the children are African-American, Indian-American, Pakistani-American. Would those children want to come to the museum and look at the collection and find something relevant? They might like the boots from the Burr family. And I think it's wonderful that you now can touch the boots, which I know at one time, one couldn't touch the things in the museum and that's changed. So it's more welcoming to the public to come in. But how do we make the collection and the mission relevant to people who came in the seventies, in the eighties, in the nineties and the two thousands? So, uh, recently there was a volunteer, excuse me, an intern working at the museum this summer. Her name is Molly and she was going through all these rosters that had been collected for the schools, so they. You know, where did you live and when you went to school in the thirties and where you once, did you attend school every day? Well, that's lovely, but what are we gonna do with these things? So I asked her, I said, when you're going through them, can you find? Names of people who maybe weren't there and cook. Can you find anything in these rosters that might be interesting to? Some of the folks who don't look like me, who might want to come here. So she found. Different names. There are in these rosters. People who took English in the thirties. What were their names? This is interesting. Why were they taking English classes in the thirties in Bellingham? So I think that's interesting. And I think if we look at some of the texts, the books, excuse me, you know, there's evidence that there were slaves owned. Who were these slaves? And is there any relevance to the story of those slaves currently? So I think it's, so kind of taking a real step back and saying, what can we do as a historic commission to honor what happened before? And the people who came to Bellingham and why ever they came here. And I could be as geeky as the next guy about the Wilcox rakes. I really like all that stuff. But, uh, my grandniece is going to want to come and look at those rakes, maybe for about thirty seconds, but could we look for? Why did a group of people move to Bellingham in the seventies from Pakistan? What? I don't, I'm making this up. I don't know that that's actually true, although I did a little volunteer work at the, the, um. Fire department. So I know there's some neighborhoods where there are groups of people who came. And how can we connect with those folks, just as much as we connect with the Burr family, about. The history of Bellingham, maybe in the seventies and the eighties. And then thinking about these folks who took English. What's, that's kind of interesting. And now who's, who's taking English classes now from Bellingham? So. If I would be, um, on the commission, that, that's sort of my bias. How can we connect the past? Preservation, which I think is very important, but why do people want to look at this stuff anyway? I like looking at it anyway, but not everybody does. Um, so I think that would be really, um, meaningful. And then if there's any way that people can physically get. From across the street to over here. Without having to navigate eighty-five different crosswalks, because I know there's a walking program on Wednesday mornings from the senior set, well, seniors tend to go. They might come over to the museum if they could get over here without it, you know, having, I don't know, take a bus. So I do think there's something about reaching out to. The senior center and the library and having the connections be not just on a webpage. But in person. So one of the things we, um, as a volunteer, what I've discovered is. If you say, we're in this meeting right now, if you say, well, the meeting could be on Zoom. But if the meeting's on Zoom, then people don't get to see the collection. They don't come over there, so they're not interested. So the, um. Some way of connecting to the past, honoring Ernie and Marsha Crooks and everyone who was involved. But also what history was not documenting? What is that that we don't know? And I may not be the one to ask that question. It may be someone who comes in, but somehow we have to get those folks to be involved. So that's sort of where I'm coming from. But I can geek out as much as the next, next guy about the postcard. And one of the things I really love to do, when you go to town pizza and they've got the faded ones like you guys have here. We can print out brand new ones. We totally could do that. It's a matter of literally going on the website and go, ha. Now, maybe they like the old faded ones because Charlie's, you know, grandfather brought them over, but, um, they exist, so. Any questions you have for me?
I don't. I just, I just want to say, you know, one of the biggest things for all the years I've been involved in town. Has been the museum. And how do you get the people in this town? To understand that that is an open book, that you need to go to the museum. I. Ernie fascinated me, fascinated me. I mean, sometimes I went in there and I would say, oh my God. I don't know how you put all this stuff in here. And I never went in the cellar because it scared the living daylights out of me. But he had some of the neatest stuff I had ever seen and. When I became town clerk, putting it up on the walls in here was so very important to me.
Right.
And to the people in this, in this building.
Sure.
So, yeah, getting people connected to that is one of the most important things, I think, that the commission can do. Because it's not just the kids. You want to get those adults in this town involved in our history, because it's, it's, it's wonderful. I, when I was part of the Blackstone Valley National Corridor. And we worked for two years going through the history of the town in order to, they didn't like, they didn't take us, but it was fascinating.
Right.
So, yeah, I would love to see that happen. It would be wonderful.
I think it's interesting because those of us who are old enough to know who Kitty Carlisle was. Who's television personality, right? So in some of the collection there, there's a letter from Kitty Carlisle. So we, some of us, would get really excited about that. But other people were like, well, you know, for thirty seconds, they might be interested, but I think your point is well taken. How do you get people in the door? To connect with the collection, right? And I could tell you eighty-five stories, but I won't keep you here tonight, but. There are interesting things at the museum and I know the commission has been looking at. What in the collection is relevant to Bellingham? And what is in the collection that's neat and cool and old? But needs to go somewhere else. Literally, we found a ruler from another, from another town. So we got in touch with them and like, hey, we have this ruler. Would you like it? Because it has. It has nothing to do with Bellingham. It just happened to be in the collection. Right. Cause Ernie would go around and buy stuff at yard sales. And they're great and they're cool and you want to touch them, but you know. Is, is some other person going to be interested in looking at that? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Anybody else?
No, just thank you. I know that you put a lot of hours into the last couple of years. I just want to thank you for all the time you've spent over there.
Well, I appreciate it, but I do think it's this two, this two, um. Points of my involvement. One is being a volunteer in the museum and, you know, that senior tax write-off and you do it anyway and it's sort of, um. It's like housekeeping, right? And then I think the differences from, uh, from a commission standpoint is. Having it be more, and I don't mean me personally, but the commission setting the goals. So when I'm in the, if I'm doing volunteer work now, we find a random collection of metal. I don't make the executive decision to throw it away. We bring it to Rick or we bring it to Bernadette and we go, hey, here's this random collection of metal. And they look at it. And they decide based on the commission's point of view, do we keep it? So I think what I'm asking for in this is, I love doing the volunteer work. I continue to do that, but this is more setting the. Parameters for what is the commission do and then quite frankly, being the worker bee. So if we say. We think it would be really important to, um. Educate the public more about what the museum has. So we think it would be really important to make a guidebook. The, the decision of make the guidebook is from the commission. The worker bees over here or the volunteers can maybe type up the guidebook. But the content and the layout and all of that, I think, comes from the commission or volunteers come up with a great idea. And then we bring it to Bernadette, we bring it to whoever and we go, what do you think about this, Rick? Because, you know, it's not to me as a, as a person who's helping organize the basement.
Right.
And by the way, there's a gentleman, Jack, if you ever meet Jack, who is cataloging the entire basement.
Oh, my God.
So any hours that I have spent there. I couldn't be in the basement as many hours as Jack and literally looking at stuff and going, ah, here's this item and here's that item and this random collection. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time and then you know, we'll schedule something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next one is, it's, um, on the agenda. And Nick Olery. East Coast Renewal Energy, electric, you know, electric vehicle charging station.
Uh-huh, could I just jump in? Dennis? Yeah, if I could just for a moment, um, Nick and I, Nick reached out to me some time ago about the, uh. Stations and I'm sorry I can't be there tonight, Nick, but, um, he's done a lot, he's done a lot of work investigating, uh. Grant opportunities for us and other communities. That's what his company does and. I think it's a, an opportunity that the town should consider. We, we have submitted a preliminary. Uh, grant submitted and obviously that's subject to the board's approval, but I think it's, it's an. Uh, grant submitted and obviously that's subject to the board's approval, but I think it's, it's an opportunity for us, a no cost opportunity. And then also an opportunity to, to earn some revenue as well. And Nick's gonna present that.
How you guys doing today?
Good to be doing it. Thanks for um. Stay in now, a little bit later than probably we anticipated.
That's alright, I enjoyed it. So thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Um, before we get started, the state of Massachusetts has this wonderful incentive going on. Who are not only municipalities, colleges, um for-profit, nonprofit entities. Uh, it's installing level three fast charging stations. And the incentive is covering basically a hundred percent, uh but there's obvious adders to everything. So my company is uh covering the, the adders if you order them. So you have a complete package to all these charging stations. So putting the charging stations throughout the town, I think Dennis came up with three relocations, Dennis, is that correct?
Yes. The DPW, DPW building, Town Common. Uh, I was very excited at the opportunity to have a couple of charging stations put there and obviously it's very accessible. And down on Pulaski Boulevard at the corner of Harpren Street and Route one twenty-six. In such a way that we'd actually be able to connect with our Snet Trail by walkway. So it's kind of an interesting project that I know Rob Lucius is working on to see if we can't get some grant money to extend the Snet Trail to uh. Meet up with, with the proposed charging stations we go down there.
These charging stations will uh accelerate. The uh renewable energy opportunity that the town of Bellingham has. And it's also a wonderful way of generating revenue. So by my, my company donating the difference between what the utility is covering. Um, my companies will uncover. Will install a charging station. You'll own and operate the charging stations a hundred percent yourself. Meaning you'll receive all the revenue. Um, how I've set it up, with Dennis is my explanation, is you charge fifty cents a kilowatt hour. All vehicles can charge. Teslas do need to have their adapter to charge, but all other vehicles can charge. Um, fifty cents a kilowatt hour, the charging station does take five cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, that doesn't go to me. It's the processing of like credit cards and stuff like that. Twenty-four hour service. If somebody goes to charge and there's a problem, you can call. So you guys keep the difference. Obviously, there are costs that you'll incur, cost of electricity. It's all built in micro former. Uh, which I can explain to you guys in a second. But the revenue from it is gonna be outstanding. So Massachusetts. You have these charging stations. Rhode Island, there's no charging station incentive. So people from Rhode Island will come over and charge. You're gonna get a lot of revenue from that because I have two electric vehicles. I know what it's like to have a level-two charger at my house and how long it takes to charge. When you're on the road driving around, having a fifteen-minute charge is a heck of a lot better than a six-hour charge. Um, but you know, this thing, these charging stations will generate money. On average, uh, everything's based upon an average charge. So when your battery's at fifty percent, we charge it to about eighty percent. For every six people who are charging per day, will generate the town about ten thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year. So everything's increments of six. So twelve people charging an average charge will generate the town about twenty thousand dollars. So my opinion, the Pulaski Boulevard is probably gonna generate the most because it's on the border of Rhode Island. So people will come over. I know myself, when I go into other areas, whether it's Connecticut or New York, I'll drive thirty minutes. To charge at a fast charger, opposed to having them charge at a six-hour charger.
Is it, so like an app that somebody has like, no, like in the Tesla cars, you can see it all? But is there an app, say, you're driving at four ninety-five, you don't have a Tesla? Oh wow, there's, there's one at uh, at whatever the address is, the DPW in Bellingham.
Yes, sir. It's called Plug Share. So Dennis, I can go over that. You will. Uh, if you guys own and operate yourself. Uh, you will have to go onto Plug Share. You'll enter all the information. So that um people like whoever can open up and find it. You wanna put it on the to, the town website, Google, so the more knowledge of it, the better. At the same point, town is gonna bring people into the town.
Yeah.
So when they're charging, they're gonna experience other things that the town has to offer.
Is there a limit to how many charging stations we can have in the town?
Simple answer is no. It's obviously based upon what the utility can approve, based upon capacity and also funds.
The reason why I ask is, there's Pulaski, which sounds great, cause it's in South Bellingham, and we have the Town Common. And Dennis, is it the DPW, the one on Mechanic Street or the one on Depot Street?
Yeah, Depot.
Depot Street.
So that, that's odd to me. That one's odd to me. Why would be there, not maybe something more like in the Stalbrook? On the Stalbrook School property. Also the Medway Line, closer to four ninety-five. Just doesn't seem like a, a good place for it.
We were trying to, we were trying to identify town properties that would make sense. On um, you know, to put it on a school property, I, I don't know how appropriate that would be to have cars coming in and going into the. The school uh property. We really. On Hartford Avenue. If, and, and certainly uh, we can amend our application and put in additional stations. This is a start. You're right, limited, but we were, we're looking at locations that would have a reasonable amount of passageway traffic. Obviously, the Town Common. Uh, since that Bay Bank went out. Remember, we used to have the lease payment that helped subsidize the cost of the common. This would help to do that again. We do have an appropriation for the common, but this, those funds would help to subsidize that operation. The um, the corner of Harpren and, and Route one twenty-six is perfect. Um, it would require uh some contact with the, with the school committee. It's nowhere near the. Uh, the schools. It's, it's right on Route one twenty-six. But that property is a part of the major, you know, Salt Elementary School property. So we would have conversation there with, with the uh school committee as, as well, but you know, funds raised there could go towards. Um, you know, obviously, and we're evolving fund towards some school uh use, but I understand what you're saying. We, we were hitting our head against the wall myself.
Yeah.
You're trying to come up with locations that would, would have the most passageway traffic that we have control of. That we can put parking spaces on. So we're still obviously.
Dan, what about, what about the old senior center?
Community center.
The old community center, cause you could pull in there and there's all that land in the back.
Is, it's, it's just tough though, and it's a tough spot on that corner. Plus you'd be in somebody's back. You know, there, there's both sides of that. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're out to solve it tonight, but yeah, just wanted, that thing is a great idea.
Just, just for clarity, um National Grid did reach out to me last week that said that the incentive is seventy-five percent filled. Um, and I'm not exactly sure what that truly means. As far, I think they've got seventy-five percent applications in. So if we do wanna add to it at this point in time, we definitely wanna put something in sooner than later. Um, doesn't mean that it's gonna be totally filled. I imagine they're gonna reopen it. But that could affect um my ability to donate everything, depending upon what the new incentive comes in as. So if there are other locations that you guys are thinking about, you definitely wanna let Dennis know as soon as possible, so I can get everything submitted.
Well, I, I trust. Go ahead. Now, excuse me, I trust Dennis has beaten his head against the wall a, a long time to figure this out, so.
I mean, it's more on listening now, you know, we, because we're gonna put that new park, you know, it's in Stalbrook too, you know, it's uh, I'm assuming, I don't know. Just a, just an idea.
Or a charging station?
Yeah. I'm gonna assume any of these is people kinda come and go, you know, it's, I don't know.
I think it might just be a little distracted to the, to the school environment.
Yeah.
Depending on where it's placed, but it's a discussion, it just. You know, all day long would be.
Yeah, that would be hard. That would be hard.
We'll discuss that later on then. We'll take a look at it, do a little more research.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any actual questions you guys have with the charging stations?
I got just.
Please.
Um, maintenance, we'll maintain some.
So um, I'm, I'm just gonna retract that answer question a little bit. So with the opportunity, you guys, you guys can open and operate, so you guys will pay the care of all the maintenance. Uh, if I own and operate, I'll do a profit share with you and I take care of all the expenses. In the situation, which I think is better, you guys own and operate. Um, and I wanna be very clear, I wanna own and operate every one of these things. But I'm, wanna do the right thing by everybody and I tell everybody what is the better option. The maintenance agreement that uh my installer offers, um we donate the first year for you for free. Okay, after that, the, you guys can, your DPW can do it. It's fairly simple. Okay, uh but my installer does offer a maintenance agreement. So based upon the warranty that is offered by the factory warranty is two years. We donate an extra three years to it, so you have a total of a five-year warranty on the equipment. Um, that covers everything except wear and tear items. So just like a car, right? You buy a brand-new car, might have a hundred thousand mile warranty, but wear and tear items aren't covered, right? The tires and windows and stuff like that, right? Um, so we give you, you have a total of five-year warranty. If you take the maintenance agreement. It's basically a lease at that point in time. You don't have to worry about anything. Except funding people over there. You wanna make sure that everything's clean and lit up, so it's welcoming for people to charge. But to answer your question, um first year, we give you a maintenance agreement for free. After that, the DPW could take care of it, or somebody else can take care of it, or you can uh hire the uh installer to cover all the maintenance.
I got some questions, two questions actually. You said installer, basically you hire someone to do it.
Yes, sir.
Could you share that, who that is? And then, you know, who um, who makes these um?
The charging stations are made by a company called Altel. I personally think Altel's the best. If I was gonna own and operate it, I would tell you to go with Al. That's what I would go with Altel, which is my recommendation to the town. Um, Altel is deeply rooted in the automotive industry. Altel is the company that does the diagnostic for your car. When you go to, you check engine lights on, you go to the mechanic or the car dealer, they stick that computer underneath. That's Altel Network. So why I like Altel is for two reasons. Number one, if EV does slow down, they're still gonna be there. A lot of these other companies, I'm not gonna get into them, but are very one-dimensional. So when EV slowed down, they started to slow down too. And their customer support, support wasn't there.
Yeah.
Whereas Altel, where if it slows down, they still have their main branch and they can still service everything. Um, I've heard a lot of war stories with a lot of other companies that their customer service wasn't great, causing the charging stations to go down. Okay, so Altel's the br, the brand that I would go with. If you guys decide to go with something else, you can go with who, who you'd like.
And no questions?
No, he answered.
So I, one last thing I was gonna make is that these charging stations are the level-three chargers. Okay, um they are a hundred and twenty KW. You will see that Tesla has a couple one fifty KWs and two fifty KWs. Those are nice to have, but the batteries that the cars currently have can't support all that charge. So I have a Tesla myself. Once my battery gets to fifty percent, it throttles down the availability to take a charge. So my battery can take a two fifty charge, but once it gets to fifty percent, it throttles down to one or one thirty. And once it gets to about one, uh about fifty-five, it throttles down under a hundred. So the one twenties are, I think, the, the number to go with. Um, a lot of the car dealers are required to put in one eighties. And they're actually acknowledging that we don't need one eighties because the battery technology isn't there. So Altel is the brand that I support. Um, if I was to own and operate it, I would tell you to go with Altel. At the same point, town, the one twenty KW is the whole donation. If you opt to go with a higher KW, my donation doesn't cover all that, because they do accelerate in price.
Okay. Dennis, what do we do here next?
What, what we wanna do is have a motion for grant application. Uh, for the, for the uh charging stations as proposed in the letter that I had uh sent Hillary attached. So um, that, that's all it takes is a vote from the board.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
So we got first, we got second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed, four-o?
That's great.
Awesome.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dennis has all my contact information. You'd like me to leave anything, I can leave to you, uh but feel free to reach out to me at any point in time.
Perfect. Thank you, so I appreciate it for your time.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, um, the next one is on the item. Um, a business pilot and community host agreement discussion for Bellingham Energy Storage. And I believe um, this is the one um, planning board, voted unanimously?
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Something different.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Did I get confused?
Yeah. I didn't, I don't, I didn't give you guys any paperwork on this.
Oh, okay. Is it you?
No, I didn't give you any.
This is the overlay.
Right, so this is, we're talking about the community host agreement for the battery storage facility. Dennis is gonna talk about.
Oh, great, perfect.
Right, I hit send. Heck, the, the company came in to talk to us about it. Some of the board members asked, but. Can, can we take a look at the agreement and see what things are in there? And of course you can. Ultimately, it's the board's. It's the board's decision as to whether or not we sign off on that. So I did include a cop with the uh, oh, that I sent out on Thursday. So you have that agreement. Um, it, it's, it's similar to the agreement that they struck with Medway, so. Uh, obviously, we have a lot of insight. It's the same company and, and they shared those agreements with us. Um, I did bring on, obviously, Chief Miller and, and Chief Fitzgerald to get their input on that. Um, and that's how we crafted the items there. They're, they're different. Dollar-wise, they're, they're similar a little bit more than, than the uh Medway agreement. But uh, um, they're more crafted towards things that we think are important for the town of Bellingham. One thing that the chief wanted, the fire chief Miller wanted to put in was a, a uh, I think it's called a fire resource training officer. That they would pay for.
At um.
Ninety thousand?
You're right, so.
Which is good.
They would pay for, for a number of years.
Hey, Dennis, I have a question about that. Cause I read through the agreement earlier today. Does that ninety thousand, will that increase year over year with, you know, inflation or CPI just based on the cost? You know, as you turn people, if you hire somebody and then you turn somebody over, we may have to hire them at a higher rate. So is there a way to have an increase year over year for that ninety thousand dollars?
We, and obviously, it's a, it's a question that we can have, and if that's.
We should.
What, what Midway did was, theirs is almost like the, the Fast Cops program, if you remember, where it decreases. They pay the full salary the first year and then a little less the next year, so just the opposite. But we could say that, you know, as long as that, as long as that facility's there, we want them to fund the position regardless of the cost. That can be.
Yeah, and you know, we could put in a, you know, like, not to exceed a certain amount, like three or five percent or CPI, which is ever greater. There, there's language we can put in there to make sure that our increasing costs are covered by this company.
That's a good idea.
Put that in and obviously.
Yeah.
Our, our, you know, our, our attorney, Rick Holland from KP Law has been very much involved in this as I have. And um, it, it's been a lot of back and forth, so we can certainly uh, you know, certainly address it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Um, and you see some of the other things, sidewalk improvements, um, you know. I think we have a half million dollars in the sidewalk improvements in that area. Um, you know, one of the things that we have coming up is we have a tip project proposed. For Hartford Avenue from the Walmart all the way to the Medway Town Line. Sidewalks are gonna be done in that area. It may very well be that we wanna, you know, maybe earmark that half million dollars for. You know, roadway improvements elsewhere or for, for, I know we keep talking about, you know, park opportunities and things like that. A little bit more general use, so it can be used for sidewalks or other recreational uses as the select board determines.
Miss, Dennis, just to remind me, on the um, on, on the tip project. Is that set for sidewalks on both sides of one twenty-six?
As of right now, it is. It could be modified, but yes, de, definitely, certainly wherever this.
I thought it did. I just wanna make sure, cause we absolutely need it on both sides of that road.
With bike lanes, alright?
Yeah, the bike lanes will be there too. So some things will have to be done, but.
Recall, project goes through the planning stage, they will have.
Yeah.
Right there in that meeting room where the state will come down, our engineers will come down, but that is the plan, much like the. Mu, much like the uh project uh that we just did on South Main Street from the, the town center.
So it, it would probably be better for the town of Bellingham to have that five hundred thousand dollars, not earmarked specifically for sidewalks. But a general fund that could be used for the betterment of the residents of Bellingham, which could be a park, it could be sidewalks. But it really is for the betterment of the, the residents of Bellingham.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we need to tie it into, and it can be loosely tied into uh mitigation for the project, but we can.
Sure. Okay.
Make that, yeah.
I think we should be focused on North Bellingham, honestly, because.
I think we should be focused on North Bellingham, honestly, because this is impacting North Bellingham.
Yeah, very much so.
I don't want to just, you know, not say South Bellingham, but I think in some way where this facility is going to be in North Bellingham, not that there's going to be any negative impact, but if there's a way that whenever that money is decided, that we focus on the areas of the north side of town, because there's been a lot of great development in the south side over the years. And there's a lot of feeling that North Bellingham is a little bit forgotten, you know, so.
A- a- absolutely, we can um look at that, and, and you're right, the, 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 you know, obviously, the benefit of this project is it's, it's very low. It's no impact.
Uh very low impact.
Yeah, certainly, uh we can certainly uh take that into consideration with the way the work contract goes.
Awesome.
So that was, that was pretty much it. Uh the board did ask if you could take a look at it, obviously, you know, you'll be the ones that will be um assuming that the uh oh energy overlay goes through, then, then, you know, this would be coming forward for your consideration.
Great.
Okay.
Good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Yep.
And the next one?
Yeah, the next one is um.
This is the MBTA communities.
Well, the sent article entitled MBTA Communities Overlay District on the Fall Meeting Ward. Back to the Planning Board through mission one, Planning Board for Review in accordance
Yeah, we did the.
With Mass General law, chapter forty-eight, section five, and Planning Board procedural rules, section two point one.
Yep.
Yep, so this is just, um so these are the two, this is the article that's going on the Fall Town Meeting Ward and part of the zoning, uh zoning procedures that we have to send this article to the Planning Board for review.
Okay.
So the motion needs to um, so you need to move um to send the Energy Resource Overlay District zoning article for the Fall Town Meeting set for November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, back to the Planning Board for Review in accordance with GL, General Law Chapter forty A, Section five, and the Planning Board procedural rule, section two point.
So one clarification.
Yeah.
Or I'm looking at other businesses and I heard um
I read the.
Share MBTA, you just read the one above it.
Yeah, I'm doing, I just did the Energy Resource.
I just, yeah, that's what I thought, I try to make sure that they're there, okay, so.
I thought that was, that's why I got confused between the, what Dennis just mentioned and then that one right there.
No, it's two different ones.
Okay.
No, this, the Energy uh Resource Overlay District is the one that Dennis was just referring to.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
This is just the MBTA one.
No, we either do that one next.
We're gonna do that one next, that's why I asked for clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
They, you're trying to jump.
Oh, okay.
You jumped one.
Yeah, I did, yeah, sure.
So I just read the motion.
So moved.
Second.
So we got first, we got second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. So now, the one I just mentioned that about the MBTA.
Yeah.
Before I jumped over the first one.
That's okay.
I can read the motion. Better, if you want me to. Um so we need to uh vote to send the MBTA Communities Overlay District zoning article for the Fall Town Meeting set for November twentieth, twenty five, twenty twenty-four, back to the Planning Board for Review in accordance with General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, and the Planning Board procedural rules, section two point one.
So moved.
Second.
We got first, we got second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Four o. No, we haven't missed anything yet.
No.
Now.
Okay.
It went great.
Yeah, the next one is, I might need a different pair of glasses, looks like.
So the next one.
You know, you can pinch it, saying you make it larger, you know.
You know what, that's a great.
You know, you could do that, I, even classes I had to do that.
I got the paper and I got the.
And you have in right next to it, come on.
Okay, the next one is.
So the next one is um a, a deed in lieu of foreclosure that was accepted at the Brighton Town Meeting. And so the board needs to accept um the deed in order for it to be registered, the um Norfolk Registry of Deeds, and I gave you guys the motion for that, I don't know if you need me to read it or you have it.
Somebody wants to read that?
Um I'll make a motion to accept the deed from the Tactus State LLC, a property located on Pulaski Boulevard, pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven C.
Second.
We got first, we got second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we did assign the um the deed.
Yep. While we're doing that, can we go to the next one?
Yep.
Let's move on. So we got the exhibit award. Twenty-five.
Here it is, I'll read it. I move that the select board authorized the DPW to purchase Roxal for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in accordance with bid received in the cooperative bid number PW eleven sixty-nine administered by the town of Bellingham.
Second.
You got first, we got second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four o. Okay. While we're signing that, we'll move to the next one. Contract award lead paint testing services for Bellingham, housing.
Yeah, that, that is for the Community Development Program. And that's all grant funded, so if, if they did run into a situation where that they were doing work on, uh their property had to have lead paint remediated, then that's the contract they would use, and again, that's all funded through the grant.
Chairman.
Yes.
I'll move to make a motion to award the lead paint testing services in with con- connection with the FY two oh two-two dash two oh two-three CDBG grant funded Bellingham Housing Rehabilitation Program to Caulfield Environmental, two forty-three Legate Hill Road, Lomster, Massachusetts.
Second.
We got first, we got second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Four o. Okay, the next one is um total gift and grants.
Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the gifts and grants as listed here in with said expenditures to be under the directions of the parties noted. And we have Fund two seven oh six, fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two green communities, the purpose of Petro Elementary School in Keel, Memorial Academy LED lighting, and that's by the school department. Um four three three five is forty-six hundred dollars, MEMA Emergency Management Performance Grant, and that's for the fire department. Six oh nine oh is two hundred and fifty dollars, Mrs. Carla Normanton, which is a gift, donation for fire prevention account. And six zero nine zero is two hundred dollars, the Howard family, and that's a donation for a fire prevention account.
In a second.
Okay, Jen.
Hey, we got first, we got second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Four o. Okay, next one is uh hold on ARPA funds.
This Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the projects as listed here in with the said expenditures to be under the directions of the parties noted. And that's sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents, ARPA, NE, NEU funds, which is the Strawbrook Playground, and that's by the school department.
Perfect, the second.
Second, Jen.
Hey, we got first, we got second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you have another one?
Yep, the um, this is one where the funds need to go back to Norfolk County. And it's just what funds that weren't used and projects that were already um previously for those amounts, and then we can then request them back for other projects.
Okay.
I got it.
Um. Okay, Mr. Mathews.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the above listed funds to be returned to Norfolk County. The amount is seven thousand, one dollar and eighty-four cents. It's returned to Norfolk County to reallocate for a new ARPA project, suspending authority is Finance Department.
Second.
We got first, we got second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Four o. Next one is uh moving on the August nineteenth, September sixteenth minutes.
So moved.
Here from Jen.
Okay, we got first and we got second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four o.
Yep.
And um the next one is under the new business.
Um actually, old business.
Old business.
Um the zoning bylaw review committee.
Oh.
Dennis, do you want to talk about this, or do you want me to?
Dennis?
He's coming, he's trying to get us.
I apologize, I was trying to get my. Um well, essentially, uh we've got, we, we have two members of the, we have one seat open, citizen at, at large. We have two individuals that are interested in, in being involved. There's a third, would be a third member of the Planning Board, and I, I know that there are legal ways of avoiding conflict. Um but when you have three members of a five-member board sitting on a subcommittee, it can be difficult to avoid issues of, of uh deliberation, so I, I, I think it makes it difficult um, you know, to, to consider um putting a third member on there. We have two candidates, Jeff Score Navaca, who's interested, and we have Stephen Goyat, who I say is on the uh, on the Planning Board. So it's a, you know, certainly uh decision for the board. Um we did get an opinion from Town Council that there would be a way uh to make sure that, you know, deliberation doesn't happen, it would have to be a very conscious effort to avoid conflict on there. And I, I just think it's something that, you know, it, it's exposure that I don't think you need to have three members of, of one board sitting on a subcommittee like that, that could lead to um an issue charging a, a violation of the open meeting law.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I agree, I, you know, I mean, both gentlemen are wonderful, but I, I don't think we should have three members of any board sitting on a committee ever.
Yeah, that's.
I, it's just not, shouldn't be.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So at this point in time, you have Jeff Score Navaca, I don't know if you want to break him in. I know you've interviewed him in the past, but um if you do appoint him, that committee will be full and there'll be, actually, I'm sorry, Hillary, we were going to bring all the members uh as far as the names and have the board appoint them all at once, is that correct?
Yeah, ne- next meeting, once we had this discussion, yeah.
Okay.
All right. If you guys were okay with just appointing Jeff.
Yes.
No problem. Jeff is, is very knowledgeable.
And he, and he would like.
Done there, done there, done that, he's.
The only, the only thing I'll say to this whole process, it was very, very disheartening, because um aside from myself bringing this to Rob, um Steve actually raised this as well to Rob. He and I had conversations, so he was one of the early people a long time ago, when he was going through the change in bylaws, to do, we need to change zoning, et cetera, and he was very much a proponent. And um, and this was before he was elected to the Planning Board, and we were talking about getting this started.
Right.
So, you know, Mr. Goyat had, you know, he put a lot of effort into a lot of things here um into this piece. He and I both sat with Rob quite a bit to talk about it. And, and I know the other gentleman, I don't know him, I'm sure I've met him, I have nothing against him personally. And I, I understand, what, what's disheartening is that members of the Planning Board showed no interest in this position. And then I, and I don't know if it was political in nature or what, but then all of a sudden it was um you know, and I know Mr. Divine was interested, so I'm not going to say anything. He said, yeah, I'd like to do it, it, it just seemed like it was a way to keep Mr. Goyat off this board, and it's disheartening. I'm just saying it publicly, it's how I felt, it's how I feel. Um I, you know, I think all the members of this committee are highly qualified, they're very knowledgeable, I have nothing against any of the other Planning Board members, but you know, it was, it was really interesting to me that, you know, it was going to be recommended that Steve be, then out of nowhere, another board member said, hey, I think I'm interested in being, doing this now, and I just thought it was a bit unfair. It was, it was, it seemed intentional to keep Mr. Goyat off the board. And, and that's too bad, because he was one of the original members that brought this to Mr. Lucier to say, we really need to take a look at zoning, so that's just my two cents. Um I'm going to be in, I'm going to, you know, I think, I do agree though, that having three members of the Planning Board um could, could listen, I've been through this, I, we don't want to, we don't want to have any issues, we really don't. So if we didn't have somebody else that wanted the position, then we'd be okay, they'd have to, the, the committee would have to be very, very careful. Um but, but only having two, I think we're, we're, we're in safer waters, we don't need issues down the road. Um so for that reason, I just wanted to make that public statement.
Yeah.
Um nothing against the other gentleman, but um I think Dennis is right, it could, and I, and I spoke with Town Council too. And it's not that you can't do it, there's no, there's no reason you can't do it. But there could be potential problems.
Well, that's.
And I want to avoid issues, and we want to avoid issues, we really do.
Yeah, we don't want to have a problem, so then it's, I think that was the joint meeting when we had it, right? Then we have that joint meeting, the Planning Board was here, and then you know, it's when you, I think, you know, it's.
No, the joint meeting was the um Mr. Rob.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Anyway, so um I will make this, I will put the um, the appointment of all the members and their names for the committee on the next agenda, so we can do it um all together, all right?
Perfect.
Yep.
So what's next?
Um new business, Jen had to, wanted to bring something up.
Okay, I'm not going to, good. Uh actually, uh Jen and I had met, and I, I know Jen's had some interest with trying to resurrect what we used to do uh closer to the Fourth of July as far as our summer event goes, and I suggested she bring it before the board and see if we can't uh do some advanced planning to, to get that started, so Jen, I'll let you speak to it.
Uh so basically, in a nutshell, we were, and the town's been very interested in bringing back their fourth July fireworks since we moved to the point nineteen. Um Dennis and I had a conversation saying we'd like to look at what that looks like in the coming year, meet with the stakeholders as far as police and firing, get there in two secs and see what we can actually do. Um so I'm, I'm on before you, your emergency, see if we can talk about that and have that, talk about a conversation with Dennis.
I don't see a problem, I, I, some of the conversations I had, a lot of people, they were asking why we don't have the fireworks in Fourth of July.
I brought up, three years ago, my last year as a member of the board before, and wanted to bring it back as well. I think it's, it's July Fourth celebration, they're on for a long time. And the board at the time said, oh, but you know, I, I like separating it, we like to have these Bellingham days, I, I love the idea.
There's nothing against Bellingham days.
Not at all.
This is just, we moved it for the anniversary year, temporarily, with all, with all the conscience of bringing it back, something, I'm, I'm seeing, some things have gotten in our way, and that just never found its way back to July Fourth, so it may be slightly different, it might be very much the same, but you know, we're going to talk about that and see what it looks like. Um you know, our town definitely wants it back, and we're trying to find a way to help.
Certainly have seen enough of folks on Facebook saying, why can't we have it on the Fourth?
And people about.
You know, people also, I think, we discussed it in the past, too, you know, it's a, a little favor, you know.
The outcome might be very different, it might be July Fourth in a big week, who knows what's going to look like, we're going to do the due diligence, see what it looks like.
I think the only thing that I remember correctly uh through the years of when I sat here and when I was Town Clerk was I think the only thing that I remember that was negative was, I remember the chief saying it was difficult to get people, the guys, to want to work it. And that's, so that's something.
Now we have, you know, new.
A new chief.
The new chiefs that have their perspective, that can bring it to the table and talk about.
So make sure we have our, everybody who's willing.
Be everyone safe, be everyone entertained, celebrating, you know, so. That's what we got to do.
And the other, the other thing I heard is that, you know, when you have it on July Fourth, we have, we certainly have a larger uh participation, because we have, we have town, other towns coming in, and it's more chaotic, it requires more coordination, but you know what? I, I still think it's worth the effort, and Bellingham was well known for having the best fireworks on July Fourth.
It's also about being financially responsible.
Right.
Make sure that we can afford it, which is like, so.
Right.
What that plan is going to be is after we have that sit down and talk.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, the surrounding town.
Doesn't hurt to, to investigate it and see what, whatever.
What's that, the subcommittee to do that? Is that what we're talking about? You can head, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, what was the question, I'm sorry.
So basically, we want to leave here to have our, our conversations after, but going forward, is that your meeting?
Right. Right, we're going to move forward, I've contacted uh John Regario, who owns uh Rhode Island Pyrotechnics to try and confirm a date um with them, Fourth of July is on the, on the Friday this year, so we're working to um in anticipation of, of the board's support, uh haven't heard, I've spoken with him, he hasn't confirmed yet, but we're working on that, and, and I think uh, you know, obviously, the, the groups that raise money at this event will be, in the past, will be pleased at the opportunity, so um we'll do the best we can to get it on the Fourth. As I say, the Fourth is on a Friday, worst case, we're on the Fifth, and which, by the community, but we'll do the best we can.
So I plan to come back with a more formal.
Okay. It's great, so we'll send it to them then. Okay, probably, perfect. That's awesome, that's great. Um so the next, Dennis?
Yes.
You're good? You're good?
I am. I'm sorry. I'm sitting out here in the dark on you, but, um, I, I just wanted to let you know that the. Town Administrator Search Committee is doing a great job, and we're actually going to be conducting interviews next week. So we should have recommendations for the board the following week. That's moving right along. Great committee, and they've done some good work, and I think we've got some, some very good candidates to, to you in the next, uh, couple of weeks.
That's awesome. That's great to hear.
Right. That is all that I had.
That's awesome.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
May I just?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Matthews.
We have our superintendent schools here this evening. We just, um, you're just here to grace with your presence, or was there something you wanted to?
It was the ARPA, uh, funding for.
Okay. Okay, great, okay. Just in case, thanks for coming and sitting through it all.
You can come anytime, you know.
You always walk back. Maybe I will. Um, we had Friday.
There we go.
Yes, I did.
And we all know, you know, you don't have a busy schedule, you know.
Actually, it's very nice to have people in the audience.
Okay, is this, uh, everything?
Yes, everything.
That's perfect. So we.
Make a motion to adjourn. That's right.
Okay, we got first, we got second, and then, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Meeting adjourned.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your.